Buenas, son Hafedee. Nos desculpamos por el retraso. Teníamos algunas dificultades técnicas. Está lloviendo, así que esa es nuestra excusa. No hay serpientes en el edificio, solo está lloviendo. Así que desculpa por estar tarde por eso. Así que esta audiencia pública se ha llamado a ordenar y ahora es las 9:13 AM. Y es el 9 de julio, miércoles 2025. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo yo misma, senadora Talotidegri, presidenta del comité de inversión económica, construcción militar, relaciones regionales, tecnología, asuntos regulatorios, justicia, elección y retiro. Para cumplir con la ley del gobierno abierto, los avisos de esta audiencia fueron distribuidos a todos los senadores y a los medios vía correo electrónico publicado en KUAM el martes 1 de junio 2025 y el segundo aviso el 7 de julio 2025. El aviso de esta audiencia también está disponible en el sitio web legislativo de Guam así como el gobierno de Guam, Porthole. Me gustaría reconocer a aquellos que están aquí en persona y aquellos que están viendo desde casa. Bienvenidos a su legislatura de Guam. También me gustaría bienvenida a mis colegas que están conmigo esta mañana, senadora Sean Gamatata. Gracias por estar aquí y senadora Chris Barnett Malafunkshen, muchas gracias por estar aquí. Colegues, la copia de la legislación y documentos recibidos antes de esta audiencia puede acceder a través del enlace de Google Drive, que fue enviado a ustedes en advance. Aquellos de ustedes que están escuchando en el público, pueden encontrar la legislación en el sitio web legislativo de Guam en guamlegislature.gov. Y si necesitan ayuda, por favor, hagan callar a la legislatura al 671-472-3465. Antes de empezar, me gustaría establecer algunos roles de participación para la audiencia pública. Cuando hablen, por favor, asegúrense de hablar directamente al micrófono. Y para el registro, por favor, indiquen su nombre, posición y a quién representan. Le pido a aquellos que testifican hoy, queden sentados por cualquier pregunta que mis colegas puedan tener y luego serán excusados. Le pido respeto que nos conductemos profesionalmente y respechemos las opiniones de los demás. Aquellos individuos que no cumplen con estos roles serán retirados de la sala y prohibidos de participar. Los siguientes billones en la agenda de discusión esta mañana son el 155-38COR, el 154-38COR y el 153-38COR. Así que el primer billón en la agenda será el 155-38COR. Se presentó yo misma y es un acto para agregar un artículo 3 al capítulo 1, título 19, reglas y regulaciones administrativas de Guam relativas a adoptar las reglas y regulaciones para la adjudicación de las declaraciones de víctimas 2024, vinculado aquí como exhibit A. Este billón fue presentado a nuestro consejo legal y en su revisión no hay recomendaciones o cambios en este momento o modificaciones en este momento. BBMR presentó su nota fiscal el 27 de junio de 2025 y se dice que es... No hay impacto físico para este billón. ¿Hay comentarios sobre eso? Las invitaciones públicas para el 155-38COR fueron enviadas a los siguientes: el oficina del juez general, Comisión de compensación de lesiones crímicas, la CICC, Coalition de Guam contra el asalto sexual y violencia familiar y defensor de las víctimas, Varro. Y en este momento me gustaría tener una breve abertura de comentarios para este billón. Primero, nuevamente, me gustaría agradecer a mis colegas por estar aquí, a los interesados que están aquí y a los miembros del público por unirse hoy. Estoy orgullosa de presentar el número 155-38COR, legislación que busca adoptar las reglas y regulaciones para la adjudicación de las declaraciones de víctimas 2024. Como propuesto por la Comisión de compensación de lesiones criminales, estas reglas no son solo procedenciales. Son protecciones vitales para las víctimas de crímenes violentos en nuestra comunidad que buscan la relajación financiera y la curación a través del programa de compensación de justicia criminal. La Ley Criminal de Injuries de Guam fue creada para apoyar a las víctimas que a menudo enfrentan trauma emocional, físico y financiero sin culpa propia de ellos mismas. El 155-38 afirma nuestro deber de mantener sus derechos garantizando que el proceso de reclamación es justo, claro y en alineación con la ley de adjudicación administrativa y el estatuto gobernante de la compensación de víctimas de crímenes. Estos reglas de actualización traen una estructura necesaria para cómo se firman las reclamaciones, revisadas, adjudicadas y abogadas mientras protegen la confidencialidad y la dignidad de la víctima. También garantizan el proceso debido, mejoran la transparencia pública y fortalecen la responsabilidad fiscal en administrar la compensación de fondos públicos. Me gustaría agradecer a la comisión y al oficio del juez general por sus esfuerzos en desarrollar estos roles. Esta audiencia proporciona una oportunidad para escuchar de la comunidad y garantizar que esta medida cumple las necesidades de aquellas que se pretende servir. Y en este momento me gustaría reconocer al ex juez Elizabeth Barrett Anderson y también parte de la comisión para su testimonio.
Gracias, Madam presidenta, y en realidad muy bien estudiado su resumen de estos roles. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, soy la actual presidenta de la Comisión de Sanciones Criminales de la Criminal Injuries. Madam presidenta, mencionaste justicia, pero son lesiones, así que CI, no CJ, CIC. Ha sido un largo camino, senadores, llegar a esta mesa. Estoy muy feliz de estar aquí y, Madam presidenta, muchas gracias por tomar el billón y llegar a una audiencia pública muy, muy pronto. Las reglas originales fueron desarrolladas cuando era juez general en 2016. La comisión se convirtió en operacional con una infraestructura en 2016. Y para tener una infraestructura adecuada, necesitas reglas. Sé que como abogada, tienes que tener una agencia, necesitas reglas. Esas reglas fueron desarrolladas por la comisión en ese momento y se trasladaron a la legislatura de Guam en 2016. No se hizo mucho después de eso y dejé el oficio de las agencias en 2018, retirada. Volví en 2021 y me convirtí de nuevo en presidenta y no de nuevo, me convirtí de presidenta por primera vez. Y lo primero que hice fue volver a esas reglas. Fui a la GAR, las Reglas y Regulaciones Administrativas de Guam. No pude encontrarla. ¿Dónde estaban las reglas y regulaciones de la CICC? Llamé al compilador, dije, Jerry, ¿dónde están las reglas que firmamos con la legislatura en 2016? Allí comenzó una larga discusión legal sobre la firma de esas reglas. La ley bajo la adjudicación administrativa en ese momento requería que las reglas y regulaciones se firmaran con el secretario legislativo. Las reglas que la comisión trasladó en 2016 fueron a la presidenta de la legislatura de Guam porque ese es el head de esta rama, atención, secretario legislativo. Eso no fue, por supuesto, una firma adecuada. Fue a la presidenta en lugar de firmarlo directamente con el secretario legislativo. No estaba de acuerdo con el compilador, pero respeto al compilador. Esta es su trabajo. Y en hacer investigación para este testimonio, descubrí que el compilador de leyes trabajó con la legislatura de Guam, la 34ª legislatura de Guam, en aconsejando a la legislatura que las reglas y regulaciones y cómo se firman y cómo se promulgan estaba por todo el terreno de la mitad de la tierra, si puedo decirlo de esa manera. Debido que no era claro, el compilador y la presidenta, fue la presidenta Terlahi en ese momento, introdujeron un billón que se convirtió en ley pública, 3432, para rectificar cómo se firman sus reglas. Y eso fue, creo, en la 34ª legislatura de Guam, ¿era en 2023, posiblemente? No puedo recordar. Así que el compilador, el compilador sabía de qué estaba hablando cuando me comenzó a hablar. Dijo, no, las reglas para la CICC necesitan ser redondeadas. Ok, así que tomé un respiro. Interesante, en 2023, el senador y la presidenta Terlahi trabajaron conmigo como presidenta para revender el estatuto involucrando la compensación de víctimas. Recibimos en 2022 un auditorio de víctimas de crímenes que preguntaba por qué nuestras audiencias para adjudicar las declaraciones estaban en redes sociales, YouTube. Para ellos, esto era una violación de la confidencialidad de las víctimas. Su información estaba saliendo en redes sociales. Así que inmediatamente trabajamos con la presidenta. Se elaboró una nueva ley para proteger la información confidencial de las víctimas. Se aprobó en el verano de 2023. Y combinas un estatuto nuevo y combinas el hecho de que necesitábamos volver a promulgar nuestras reglas. Fue una bendición en disguise. Así que en 2023 y 2024, la comisión trabajó para fusionar el estatuto nuevo con las reglas y regulaciones de 2016. En abril de 2024, la comisión había adoptado las nuevas regulaciones y como se dijo, Madam presidenta, estas regulaciones son 2024. En realidad puedes extraer 2024, ya no necesitas eso porque aquí estamos en 2025. Así que son solo las reglas y regulaciones de la Comisión de Sanciones Criminales de Injuries para la adjudicación de las declaraciones, no tiene fecha. Esas regulaciones en 2024 fueron enviadas por el juez general a la presidenta porque la nueva ruta ya no era secretario legislativo. Envías tus reglas al oficio del secretario legislativo. Ok, lo hicimos. Bueno, recibimos una llamada del secretario legislativo y dijeron, bueno, nos olvidamos de obtener la aprobación del gobernador. Arrastré mi cabeza. Ok, así que la presidenta fue tan amable, sugirió que nos llevaran las reglas y retractarlas porque no querían que esos 90 días comenzaran a saltar sobre las reglas. Y el juez general Moylan inmediatamente, inmediatamente los envió directamente al oficio del gobernador y lo apreciaba de él. Durante el último año he estado trabajando con el oficio del gobernador para obtener las reglas aprobadas por el gobernador. Uno de nuestros grandes obstáculos fue el transcripción. Usamos, estábamos en Google, YouTube y tienen un transcripción de Google. No sé si alguna vez has intentado descargar un transcripción de Google, alguien? Es horrible. Pero fue el único transcripción que teníamos, la vinculamos, la dieron al gobernador y dijeron, bueno, juez, ese no es exactamente el mejor tipo de transcripción. Estoy de acuerdo. Así que el juez general fue tan amable para permitirnos contratar a un reportero en el sector privado. George Santos es uno de los mejores. Y tomó George unos meses para hacer los transcripciones. Lo hicieron, el gobernador tenía los transcripciones, los enviamos al oficio del gobernador y en ese momento estábamos en la mitad del 37 y avanzando al 38. Así que eso fue, ya sabes, un poco de retraso allí. Sin embargo, senadores, estamos aquí ahora, estamos aquí ahora. Tenemos una ley nueva aprobada en la 37ª legislatura de Guam. Tenemos la 38ª legislatura de Guam con las reglas ante ti y no puedo esperar para llevarlas a los compiladores de leyes y a esa GAR para que cualquiera que quiera investigar, bueno, ¿qué es esta comisión? ¿Cómo hacemos con aplicar y qué hacemos? En adición a la ayuda administrativa del oficio del juez general cuando vas allí para aplicar, puedes ir a las reglas y regulaciones para leer, bueno, ¿cómo aplico? ¿Qué son? ¿Cómo abogué si me negan, etcétera? Así que esas reglas, estoy muy ansiosa por que sean en la GAR. Antes de terminar mi testimonio, quería dar, cada vez que estoy frente a la legislatura, es una oportunidad para mí de mostrarte los dólares y centavos que la comisión ha estado trabajando. De nuevo, recuerda que la comisión se convirtió en operacional en 2016. La CICC continúa siendo una saludable, el fondo continúa siendo saludable. En el presente tenemos alrededor de 1.2 millones de dólares en el fondo. Está en el departamento de administración y el oficio del juez general nos ayuda con la contabilidad. Estos monedas se recogen de las multas ordenadas contra los acusados que han sido sentenciados basándose en las condenas de un crimen violento listado bajo el estatuto. Una cosa que quiero asegurarme es que cuando alguien aplica y es agradecido alguna compensación, eso no viene de un acusado específico. Las multas que vienen de los acusados, del tribunal, entran en una cuna y no es, bueno, soy víctima de ese crimen de esa persona, por lo que quiero algunas de esas multas. Quiero restitución. No, no funciona de esa manera. Así que tenemos un fondo homogéneo. Vienes si cumples con las cualificaciones elegibles bajo el estatuto y estamos muy saludables en términos del fondo. El programa también recibe fondos de incentivos del oficio de víctimas de crímenes basado en las cantidades que otorgamos, 75 centavos por dólar. Así que cada vez que otorgamos, obtenemos 75 centavos por dólar. El incentivo federal actual es, o recibimos de los fedos 374.650 incentivos de grante desde 2019. Así que comenzamos a recibir dinero de los fedos y aproximadamente 375.000 hasta ahora. La comisión ha agradecido hasta ahora, de 2016 a 2024, 1.05 millones de dólares a las víctimas y a los candidatos elegidos. El fondo no recibe ninguna apropiación directa del fondo general. El fondo no recibe ningún dinero GF. La financiación administrativa de la comisión se incorpora en las apropiaciones fiscales del oficio del juez general. La legislatura ha apropiado 65.000 en FY24 y 65.000 de nuevo en FY25 al OAG, directamente identificado para asistir al trabajo administrativo de la comisión como personal, xeroxing, etcétera, etcétera. Nuevamente, senador, eso es solo un fondo. Me encantaría responder cualquier pregunta y estoy muy feliz de estar aquí hoy con estos roles y regulaciones, gracias.
De nada. Y me gustaría reconocer a usted también como ex senador, así como ex juez y ahora la persona de la presidencia sobre la compensación de lesiones criminales, no justicia, perdón. He estado lidiando mucho con, bueno, no importa, de todos modos. Ok, así que a continuación, en este momento me gustaría reconocer el oficio del juez general. Ustedes ahora se reconocen, Fred.
Gracias. Bueno, mañana, Madam presidenta y senadores. Hafedee, este testimonio se presentó a cargo del juez general de Guam y nuestro cliente, el pueblo de Guam, en apoyo del 155-38 para adoptar las reglas y regulaciones para la adjudicación de las víctimas de crímenes.
Y solo reconocer su nombre y...
Oh, perdón, Fred, inicia aquí, asistente juez general para la CICC. Esta ag y nuestra administración creen en las víctimas de crímenes luchando en contra. Y parte de esa lucha en contra no es solo la catarsis de incarcerar justamente al criminal culpable. Un elemento importante es que una víctima de crímenes recibe restitución o es de otra forma entera. La ley busca establecer y actualizar un marco en el que la CICC pueda agradecer a las víctimas de crímenes violentos la compensación por sus lesiones mientras al mismo tiempo protege la salud, la información de salud personal de las víctimas de crímenes. Las víctimas de crímenes nunca peden por la violencia o lesiones perpetradas sobre ellas. Sin embargo, sin cambios a nuestras regulaciones, los registros médicos de las víctimas de crímenes pueden convertirse en público y ser sujetos a la disclosure o inspección pública. Estos roles y regulaciones administrativos alinean con la actual Ley Criminal de Injuries de Guam. Moiland y su oficio han ayudado a la CICC a garantizar que las reglas y regulaciones cumplen con los estándares de grante establecidos por el Office of Victims of Crime de Estados Unidos. Este billón ayuda a garantizar que Guam continuará recibiendo reembolso en la cantidad de 75 centavos por dólar gastado en una víctima de crímenes o en los funeral de muerte de caso de muerte. Este billón ayuda a las víctimas de crímenes y gasta dinero en nuestro pueblo. Esta ag y mi cliente apoyan este billón. Gracias por esta oportunidad de comentar sobre esta legislatura. Respeto, ag Douglas. Respectfully, AG Douglas Moyland. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey. And at this time, I'd like to open up to my colleagues for any questions they may have. And I'll start with Senator Gummatauta. You are recognized, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Judge, for being with us. And Fred, appreciate you being here on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General. I only have a couple of questions, but I think you might have answered a bit earlier, but I'll just go ahead and ask you for the record. But recognizing, again, that it was stated during the March 1st, 2024, public hearing on the proposed CICC rules and regulations, that the Commission's proposed rules and regulations from 2016 failed promulgation with the compiler of laws due to an oversight related to submitting the info to the Guam Legislature. This is probably an interesting, insightful question, but how has the CICC managed to adjudicate applications in the interim, including the estimated 18 awards that were granted between January 1, 2024 and December 31, 2024?
Excellent question. I think the Commission and the staff of the Attorney General's office was under the assumption that the 2016 rules were good, so they followed it. In fact, when the feds came out to audit us, they actually looked at those 2016 rules, not recognizing that there was a glitch. And in addition to that, the structure, the infrastructure administratively in the Office of the Attorney General is very, very good. The application forms, the staff, the victim advocates. So we have an infrastructure that's there, even if the rules did not exist. In addition, the statute is very, very strong. And in fact, if you look at the rules, you go section by section, provision by provision. At the end of that provision, it references Title VIII, Guam Code Annotated, Section 161. So the rules mirror the statute. So in the absence, if we didn't have any rules today, we'd still have the statute. We'd still have the administrative process at the Attorney General's office. But it's always better to have something in the administrative rules and regulations for the public to go online and see that because they can't go online and see the administrative complexion of the Attorney General's office infrastructure, but they can read the rules. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you so much. And then, for the record, what concerns, and I know you mentioned the Office of the Governor just a few minutes ago, but what concerns, if any, did the Office of the Governor and other stakeholders, including but not limited to the Guam Bar Association, our sister branch and the place where I spent a little bit of time at the Judiciary of Guam, and the Public Defender Services Corporation Register, with respect to the proposed CICC rules and regulations? Recognizing, again, that a full year had went by between the receipt by Adaloup of the proposed rules and regulations on April 26, 2024, and the Governor's letter dated May 7, 2025, informing the AG that the rules and regulations that were promulgated by the CICC were consistent with the policy and the requirements of the Commission and the government of Guam?
Okay, well, that's two-part. When the Commission published the hearing to go over the rules and regulations, and it was, we had it on YouTube because this is administrative work, it went out island-wide. The Guam Bar could have been there. The judiciary could have been there. Anybody could have been there. There weren't. And in fact, I asked the AG staff. I said, "Are there, is there anybody in the chat room that wants to comment about these regulations?" So the Office of the Attorney General completely followed the open government requirements. So the Guam Bar was looking. They could have been there, any lawyer or the judiciary. None of that happened. So open government was complied with. I knew you were going to ask about the year length of time that it was at the Governor's office. Honestly, Senator, the biggest hurdle we had was getting a transcript. The administrative adjudication law, and it's good for legislative history to have the transcript of the hearing, but I didn't have the most sophisticated of technical hearings like the legislature. And in fact, the Chairwoman said, "We had a little glitch getting started technically." So those transcripts were very, very difficult. That was the biggest delay of about six months to get George to do that. And then we were towards the winter, the end of the 37th Guam Legislature, and the Governor's office was working on it. They said, "Why don't we wait till 38th Guam Legislature comes in?" But there were no questions at all from legal staff of the Governor's office other than the transcripts. That was their biggest. They had no questions about the details of the rules.
All right, thank you so much. And again, thank you for being here, and I do appreciate the insight. And I know, I know we're not quite done yet, but I think I do appreciate today and the testimony. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
You're very welcome. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, and banana sidoos to the people of Guam watching on our YouTube channel. Thank you. Always not sure what to call you because you know, you're former Senator, the judge, a former AG. So good morning.
EBA is good.
Good morning, EBA.
Your Honor is what I always address for us.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Mr. Nishara. Thank you for the testimony. You know, as I was looking over some of the stuff in the committee last night, I kind of thought, "Wow, is this a case of justice delayed, being justice denied?" So I'm happy to see that you guys have already been able to render out awards. And you know, this kind of puts the, for lack of a better term, the cherry on top of the whole thing. So, yeah, and it's interesting you bring up the year-long transcript because we got plenty of transcribers here at the legislature. You know, if you go through the committee reports, you'll see that, you know, we transcribe. So I thought that was pretty interesting. YouTube is a much better transcription program that's kind of embedded into the app, right? And so then to hear also that it was sent to the wrong emails, is that kind of what happened too?
It went in 2016 to the Speaker, but the law at that time was Legislative Secretary filing. And being a longtime government official, I send any member, any communication to the head of the agency.
Right.
But anyway, we're here today, and that's all water under the bridge. I put it in my testimony for legislative history.
Yeah, I'm very glad to show up to this hearing and hear that you're happy about this bill and these rules. Actually, supported the measure that we passed in the 37th, so I'm eager to get this through. I think it's been too long, and I'm standing in support of the measure. And I thank you again, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on it. Sidoos Massey.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. You know, the only question I have because there really are no amendments. My staff had looked over the rules and regulations. But you did mention something earlier. You said you can scratch out that 2024 and put 2025, you know, on the act.
Or just don't put it, no, don't put a date on it.
Anytime we move anything, then it would have to go through a process. So, but at this point, you know...
Just leave it as it is. Absolutely. I don't want another technical issue. At least it identifies that these were put forth by the Commission in 2024.
And these were worked on in 2024. I mean, the initiative, so it's due to form on that. That's good to hear. So in the event it's not able to get on this session agenda, by law, as you mentioned earlier about the rules and regulations and how the process goes through and the confusion, well, there's no confusion here. If it doesn't get on the, if it doesn't get on the agenda this July, then it automatically lapses into law. And for the record, there has been no request for any changes or amendments to this legislation. So it looks good, and I'm confident that it will get through. Either way, it will get through. So I appreciate your time. And most especially, Your Honor, former Senator, AG, for, you know, all those... What, you want me to call you EBA? Okay. So EBA, thank you so much for all the hard work into your commission. Please give my very best to them. I know that Poli Christostamo was trying to make it here. He couldn't make it here. Dr. Lisa Flores, also a member? Yeah, and of course Denise Mendiola. These are the individuals that assisted you with this commission, the CICC Commission. And I want to publicly thank these individuals for looking out for those individuals, like I said, who are victims that they're at no, you know, choice of their own. And greatly appreciate the Attorney General for always being here and answering the call to things as important as this. So that being said, we concluded our public hearing on Bill 155-38COR. And now we will move over to our next bill, which is Bill 154-38COR. And this bill was introduced by myself, which is an Act to amend 3102 and add a new 31021H to Chapter 3, Title III, and amended by 3103.3C1 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring documentary proof of the United States citizenship to align Guam voter registration practices with federal election integrity standards. This bill was sent to BBMR for a fiscal note and received on June 26, 2025. And this bill is administrative in nature and poses no additional fiscal impact. Also, our legal counsel at the legislature recommends no changes or amendments at this time. The invitation was sent out to the Guam Election Commission and also provided on the informational, we put this on KUAM as stated early, the public hearing notice earlier was stated on KUAM in July and again, two days prior to this meeting for the public to also participate. So at this time, I'd like to open it up with just a short statement. Hafareh and buenos to everyone again. We are here to discuss Bill 154-38, a measure I introduce in close collaboration with the Guam Election Commission to strengthen our voter registration laws in our territory and align Guam's practices with the federal election integrity standards. At the heart of this bill is a simple principle. Voting in U.S. election is a right reserved for U.S. citizens. While Guam law currently requires voter applications to declare their citizenship under penalty of perjury, it does not require actual proof of that citizenship. With the Guam Election Commission's effort, Bill 154 seeks to close that gap. Bill 154 would require voter applicants to submit documentary proof of U.S. citizenship, such as a U.S. passport, certificate of naturalization, and a certified birth certificate, alongside with a valid, government-issued photo ID. These documents are widely recognized and commonly used throughout the country for official purposes. Their use in voter registration will help ensure that only those legally eligible to vote are added to our voter rolls. Like the rest of my election reform measures, this legislation reflects meaningful dialogue with Guam Election Commission on how to effectively implement practical safeguards while respecting the rights of eligible voters. The bill also gives Guam Election Commission the authority and flexibility to securely manage records, verify documentation, and make necessary adjustments to improve the integrity of our electoral process. With the executive order 14248, recently issued by the President of the United States calling on states and territories to tighten registration requirements, Guam must not be left out or left behind. We should not be proactive, we should, sorry about that. We should be proactive in modernizing our laws and reinforcing the public's confidence in fair and lawful elections. I look forward to the discussion from our stakeholders and our community members as we work together to ensure Guam's elections remain secure, credible, and most especially accountable. Sidoos Massey. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Director of the Guam Election Commission. Maria, you are now recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair. Guahu si Maria Panglinen, Director, Election Commission, Guam. Sidoos Massey for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 15438. The Guam Election Commission supports this legislation, which seeks to reinstate the requirement for documentary proof of U.S. citizenship as part of Guam's voter registration process, aligning local law with evolving federal election integrity standards. Historically, Guam law required documentary proof of citizenship. This was later removed in 2015 to streamline registration, allowing applicants to self-declare under penalty of perjury. While this approach reduced administrative barriers, it introduced enforcement challenges that limited GEC's ability to verify eligibility and uphold the integrity of the voter rolls. In light of presidential executive order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections, this was done March 25, 2025, GEC supports reinstating documentation requirements to align with national practices, encouraging the verification of citizenship and the identity for voter registration. From an operational perspective, GEC began proactively verifying citizenship documentation beginning March 2025. The majority of outstanding registrations were resolved largely because proof of citizenship was already on file with the DMV, the Division of Motor Vehicle. GEC currently generates monthly voter registration reports and is positioned to implement the bill's requirements effectively. Bill 154-38 provides a structured approach to: one, ensure that voter eligibility is clearly established; two, provide a uniform, fair, and enforceable standard for all registrants; and three, reflect best practices for election security and legal compliance. Anticipated benefits of the bill: one, tightening the voter registry by eliminating unverified or incomplete entries; improving public trust in Guam's electoral system; minimizing election day disputes regarding voter eligibility; and enhancing readiness to meet federal expectations and audit requirements. The Guam Election Commission supports Bill Number 154-38 as a practical, balanced, and forward-looking reform. We are prepared to work with the legislature and the executive branch to implement these measures efficiently and in a manner that serves the best interests of Guam's voters. Sidoos Massey. We are here to address questions as it pertains to the conduct of elections.
Sidoos Massey, Maria, and I'd like to recognize your staff that's here today. Thank you so much for being here. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Sean Gummatauta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Maria, for being with us. And when I see those two, I get a little skittish. Publicly, I'll say that, by the way. Again, thank you for your testimony. I only have a couple of questions. What information is available regarding the extent to which the GEC monitors contributions by foreign nationals to federal or local elections, recognizing that the executive order 14248 references federal law 52 USC 30121, which prohibits foreign nationals from participating in such elections through campaign contributions and expenditures?
For the federal candidate, which is the non-voting delegate to U.S. Congress, they report directly to the Federal Election Commission, and we just get a copy. So it's the Federal Election Commission that regulates our congressional delegate candidates. For the, so they just submit a copy to us. And if I'm not mistaken, the Federal Election Commission prohibits foreign contributions, and even corporate contributions. With regard to our candidates for local offices, foreign contributions... With regard to our candidates for local offices, federal foreign contributions are allowed within Guam statute. That section has not been, of the executive order, has not been addressed. We want to start with this registration process first, and we will look at it and see what our commissioners think.
All right, thank you so much. And with respect to three GCA nine one two three, which provides that for voting purposes, verification of a person's residency shall include, but not limited to, payment of Guam personal income taxes, maintaining a home, or other living accommodation on Guam, having temporarily departed Guam with the intention of returning, and not being registered to vote in any other U.S. jurisdiction since departing Guam. What effort, if any, is carried out to verify an applicant's residency beyond a village mayor's certification, ensuring that voting is reserved for legitimate Guam residents without adversely impacting those with long-term absences, including but not limited to medical issues, work, military, and other extenuating circumstances?
What your, what your, the citation you're taking that from is addresses mostly off-island absentee voters. So with that said, as they apply through the absentee ballot application form, that doubles as registration. So with regard to residency, if they are active military or a dependent, absolutely no requirement. With regard to residency for everyone else, it would be just attestation. And they have to be at the time of registration or at the time they left Guam, they should have been on Guam at least thirty days before the next election.
All right, thank you so much, and I do appreciate your input today. And I know I mentioned being a little skittish around your staff, but they are really a hardworking staff at the Guam Election Commission. I know they're probably watching at the office, and I thank them for their service to the people of Guam. Thank you again, Maria.
Thank you, Senator Gumatautong. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sizus Massey, Madam Chair, and again, good morning to the people of Guam on this fortunate Tuesday morning. Thank you, Ms. Maria, for your testimony. So just reading through your testimony, it kind of sounds like you're able to vet a lot of the currently registered voters by using the motor vehicle database?
Senator Hunggen, yes, we are able to do that, but we don't completely clear them. So with some, I think, the majority we clear from the DMV database, but the ones that we don't clear, we contact them by email, by phone, and we write to them and send them a letter to let them know that their registration will not be complete until they submit to us, even electronically, proof of U.S. citizenship.
Is there an issue with non-citizens trying to infiltrate our elections here in Guam?
No, sir. You know, from our, from our experience back in two thousand and twenty, I believe, when we did the, during COVID, when we did the early voting and right in front of GCIC, what happened then in two thousand and twenty is as you, an early voter is considered an absentee voter. So they are signing an affidavit saying, I am Chris Barnett, and I am a U.S. citizen. So a couple of folks in trying to sign the affidavit for the early voting absentee ballot indicated that they were not U.S. citizens. So hence, they were not allowed to vote. This happens, I believe, you know, these little things, not little, but these things happen, they go through the cracks. We train our volunteer registrars, and so with the absence of the requirement for proof of U.S. citizenship, starting in two thousand and fifteen, we trained our volunteer voter registrars to make sure the new registrant initials at the attestation three times. One, that they're approved, that they're a U.S. citizen, one that they're a resident, and the third one is that they're eighteen years and above. So that was our fallback since two thousand and fifteen, and the Guam Election Commission is committed to making sure that our voter rules, voter rolls are as clean as possible, and this would help us.
So if you're a registered voter and you're vetted through DMV and their database, and then you're left with registered voters who just self-attested and didn't provide any extra documentation, if this bill passes, what's the process for those individuals?
Okay, we won't register them, they won't be on the voter rolls. Let's say they show up on election day to vote. What would happen is they would be offered a provisional ballot within seven days, seven workdays after the election. They are given time, seven days, to come in with their proof of citizenship and submit their document, and that ballot will be counted. We send them, again, we send them a letter and let them know, as soon as we, you know, when we're processing their DMV voter, what we call motor voter, when we process that, and there is no proof of citizenship on file with DMV or with GEC, we send them a letter, we send them an email, we try to call them to come in or send us proof of citizenship.
Is there any chance of withholding any federal election funds if we don't pass this law? I'm just kind of curious about the binding power of the presidential executive order.
Okay, so when we received word of the executive order, one of the first things we did after the first meeting of the Guam Election Commission Board was to write a letter to the U.S. Election Assistance Commission Chairman, who is the purse holder of our federal grant. Unfortunately, they're not able to answer or respond to our letter because of the injunctions that have been filed on the executive order. So is there a chance for us to lose federal funds? There may be, as is written in the federal, in the executive order. Right now, it doesn't look good for federal funds for Guam in terms of the budget bill does not have anymore, there's no funding for...
Are you talking about the Spencer, are you talking about the beautiful budget bill?
I'm talking about the budget bill. So with that, you know, we're watching closely, and EAC is watching closely, but right now, Todd said there's nothing for the election security grant, which is the formula fund that we get from them for twenty six, for two thousand and twenty six.
So is there anything that mandates you outside of the law passing to have to do all this before the twenty six elections?
Not clear. All the injunctions are being filed, so we're not so sure at this point in time.
And again, just for the record, we don't have an issue with catching non-citizens attempting to vote in our elections?
Uh-huh, no, you know, with early voting, it helps the election process because people stand in front of our staff, and they, we clarify who is eligible to vote, and yes, we've had minimal or no problems with that.
So kind of just going back to, I know that the Madam Chair in her opening had talked about the types of documentation that would have to be provided. Let's say you're one of those individuals who has to, you know, basically reregister, right, because you didn't provide documentation. What types of documentation are you going to be accepting?
Okay, for U.S. citizenship, it would be a birth certificate, it would, it could be a passport, a U.S. passport. We have to be careful with that because American Samoans are given U.S. passports, but they are natural, they are, they are not citizens, right? So the U.S. passport, we accept, we're careful with that now. A naturalization certificate, then the certified live birth from a foreign country, they have this, that document. Please know that a real ID is not proof of U.S. citizenship.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions. I think, you know, on its surface, it seems pretty simple, but I'm just not quite sure with the lay of the land and the injunctions that are happening, how do we move forward with this. So thank you again, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. You know, you brought that up, Maria, about that the real ID is not an indicator of real citizenship, but, you know, when you go onto the military bases, maybe or Anderson, that you're required to have that ID with the real ID on the top, from what I was told. So it's kind of ironic that, you know, the military recognizes that, but our election commission doesn't. But anyhow, I understand the importance of this legislation to meet, you know, again, be proactive and to meet the demands of what the Election Standard Commission that you work with in the U.S. So, and it only makes sense, you know, it makes sense. These are meant for U.S. citizens, you know. But other than that, if there's no other further questions, Bill one fifty four dash thirty eight has been heard, and we will now move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is Bill one fifty three dash thirty eight COR, introduced by myself, which is an act to amend four one zero two, four one zero four of Chapter Four, Title Three of Guam Code annotated, relative to modernizing precinct realignment and the composition of precinct boards. And at this time, I'd like to do a short opening on this legislation. I introduce Bill one fifty three dash thirty eight in collaboration with the Guam Election Commission to help modernize the way we administer elections in our island community. As voter registration continues to grow and population patterns shift across our villages, it's become increasingly clear that our precinct system must evolve. That's why I work closely with the Guam Election Commission to develop a bill that reflects the real needs and challenges they face on the ground in real time. Bill one fifty three makes two critical updates to the Guam election code. First, it increases the allowable number of voters per polling place from eight hundred to twelve hundred. This makes precincts more manageable, reduce administrative overhead, and helps the Guam Election Commission deploy its resources, both human and material, more efficiently and effectively. Second, the bill updates the composition and compensation of precinct boards. It allows the Guam Election Commission the flexibility to appoint up to eight board members per precinct to address real-world valuable, I'm sorry, up to eight board members per precinct to address real-world variables like available staffing, voter turnout, and logistics, especially in elections with tighter budgets or fewer volunteers. Like my previously introduced election reform, Bill one fifty three is a collaborative effort between my office and the Guam Election Commission, which at first experienced navigating the complexities of our elections. And I wanted to thank the Commission for their input and their dedication to ensuring every voter in Guam is served with integrity, access, and fairness. Bill one fifty three dash thirty eight gives the Guam Election Commission the flexibility they need to administer future elections with confidence and competence. Before I turn it over, I just want to make it clear that when we say in moving forward, you can explain what precinct boards are, some people think that's the board members, but it's not. So Maria, if you can explain that, what that is in your testimony, if you haven't, I'll be happy to do it myself, but, you know, I think coming from the Guam Election Commission to explain who are precinct boards. It's kind of an elaborate title for those who we come in and say, oh, hafadeh, I'm here to vote, and they're very happy to greet you and provide you the direction where to vote, but if you can explain that. Other than that, the bill was sent to BBMR, and there is no, from what I gathered, there is no recommendations or changes to the bill from legal and sent to BBMR and received on June twenty six their response, that the bill is administrative, basically. It has some comments in here, but it does say, per the Guam Election Committee, it currently spends approximately one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to staff seventy two precincts during elections. This legislation enacted into law would allow the Commission to reduce the number of precincts to fifty nine with a potential cost savings, and this sometimes is very rare, we get to hear this, with a cost savings of approximately thirty two thousand and five hundred per election. And that is a lot. So any amount actually is quite inviting, you know, for us at this point, considering our situation we're in. But invitations were sent out to the Guam Election Commission, and of course, it was sent out via notices and to the public on KUAM twice. So at that time, at this time, I'd like to invite the Director of the Guam Election Commission, Maria. You are now recognized, ma'am.
Hafadeh Tatlu Guahu si Maria Pangolinen, director of the Election Guahan. Sizus Massey, Madam Chairwoman, and Sizus Massey, Senator Barnett, for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill one fifty three dash thirty eight, which proposes to modernize precinct realignment and the composition of precinct boards. Precinct boards are the bosses of the election on election day. Precinct board consists of precinct officials that are trained, and there is a precinct leader, and then at this time, four precinct clerks. If any decision has to be made right then and there about a voter, it's the precinct board that decides first. The Guam Election Commission respectfully supports the passage of this bill and stands ready to implement its provisions in time for the two thousand and twenty six election cycle. Section two of the bill seeks to amend the voter threshold per precinct from, quote, substantially over eight hundred to twelve hundred. In the two thousand and twenty two elections, the GEC operated sixty seven precincts. Using the number one thousand as a practical divisor, the Guam Election Commission increased the number of precincts from sixty seven in two thousand and twenty two to seventy two in two thousand and twenty four. The proposed change to, quote, substantially over twelve hundred will allow greater flexibility in managing precinct size while maintaining an orderly voting process. Notably, early voting in two thousand and twenty four election significantly reduced election day turnout without further supporting the need to reassess the total number of precincts required. The proposed change will not only allow for administrative flexibility, it will also reduce unnecessary overhead, staffing and materials at the underutilized precincts. It will accommodate modern voter It will accommodate modern voter behavior such as early or absentee voting and improve cost efficacy without sacrificing integrity. Section 3 authorizes the GEC to assign up to eight precinct officials per precinct based on operational needs. This added flexibility enables the commission to staff precincts appropriately without the additional cost and logistical planning of opening new location. It ensures existing precincts can manage higher voter volumes efficiently. Additionally, allowing the commission to adjust stipends for precinct officials may help improve recruitment and retention of qualified workers. Experience has shown that well-staffed precincts with trained personnel lead to smoother operations, fewer errors, faster reconciliation, and ultimately more timely and accurate election results. Sidoos Massey, we are here to address questions as it pertains to the conduct of elections.
Sidoos Massey, Maria. Senator Barnett, you're recognized for any questions you may have.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, and thank you for recognizing me first as the Vice Chair of the Committee. Thank you very much.
Yes, he is my Vice Chair.
Thank you. Sidoos Massey. Ms. Maria, so I know you explained the precinct boards and you said that they're kind of like the first decision makers. Like what types of decisions do these boards make during the election?
Okay, so you know, when a voter comes in, they check in. They have to present a voter ID. If the ID sometimes doesn't match, that's one thing that they can decide on. They call, they have, they have minute by minute contact with our office. So the precinct leader will call us to verify that. Critically too, if a voter comes in without, and his name or her name is not on the list, the precinct board must, are supposed to be, offer a provisional ballot. If the, if there's some discrepancy within the voter registry and the, and the voter standing in front of them with an ID, the voter can be challenged by anybody that in, by any precinct, anybody on the voter rolls from that precinct. So when a challenge is initiated, the challenged voter will, will have to fill out an affidavit. The challenger, the person challenging that voter, that he's not eligible to vote even though he's on our registry, that challenge, that challenger also signs and, also signs affidavit. Those, whatever is before them right then and there on election day, Senator, that goes before the five precinct officials. They decide whether to make that person vote or not. And all this happens with the, with the, with the, in conjunction with our senior staff that's in the office. Our senior staff, Tomas Pashanoana, are in the office guiding them through the process. But it's the precinct board that decides if a challenged voter gets, gets to vote or not. If the challenger or the challenge does not like their decision, the next step is to refer them to the Guam Election Commission. At that point in time, we call on the commissioners to convene at 3 o'clock in the afternoon at the office and this case will be brought before them. If that doesn't happen, if they still don't like the decision, there's a standby judge at the Superior Court that we can refer the case to.
Can you, thank you for that very detailed answer, by the way. Can you also, you know, in your testimony, you say that the proposed change will not only allow for administrative flexibility, it will also reduce unnecessary overhead staffing and material, materials at underutilized precincts. Accommodate modern voter behavior such as early absentee voting and approve cost efficacy without sacrificing integrity. You know, I, I kind of disagree with Madam Chair. I was like all about saving money, but I think some things that you have to, you know, you get what you pay for. And so I think elections is, is one of those. So I guess my question is, is this bill going to make it easier for our people to go out and vote? Or is it, does it just make it easier for the election commission to conduct the election?
We always put the voter's experience first. Since probably even 2016, we have not experienced long wait times. So I think we know that with election, with early voting since 2020, that minimizes the wait times, that minimizes how many people are to be served on election day. Does this impede on the voter experience? Absolutely not. We watch out for that. We have rapid response folks that if there's a line and there's a wait, we address that right away. We send our gurus out there to help them process the voters. In 2024, we had long wait time for accessible voters at JFK, at Timuning. So what we did was we sent our folks out to help them ease the line and we are set, check updating our process with accessible voting on election day for 2026.
So just to, just to be clear, because you talked about underutilized precincts, does the bill in any way close any pre-existing precincts?
Precincts, no, we have to follow the law. So we grad, we went, we increased the number of precincts because of the, to be, in order to be compliant. So we went from 67 to 72, but you know, they're, they're, throughout the day, if you notice, if you remember in 2024, it was very quiet throughout the day. Come 2026, it's a gubernatorial election, we are
It's going to be jam-packed.
We are confident. We, you know, we, we are, we, we don't do a formal time in motion study, but we know that should there be lines toward the end of the day, we're addressing that, we're addressing that and putting in contingencies.
How about relative to reporting of the results? I know like, you know, back in, way back, I'm not necessarily sure if it's under year or tenure, but we used to get the results by precinct and now, you know, it's kind of, you know what it is. So with this, is this bill and this like kind of realignment going to help us get results quicker and by precinct?
You know, thank you for asking that question, yes, because we will have less precincts to report to. And in the process of reporting unofficial election results on election night, what we do is we, legal counsel and I screen the results that come out of the machine. As soon as that's done, as soon as the commissioners say it's a go, the media are given those results. We put it up on the website right away. Depending on which precincts I've reported, that's what we put up as we go.
Can you, can you just share with the viewing public? Sorry for all the questions, by the way. How does this bill, or does it do anything to encourage increasing voter turnout?
We're pulling our hair out, but this makes election process more efficient. We, we, we will focus in on, you know, instead of getting not so busy precincts because we have to have more precincts because of the law. Now we're more efficient and we can be more effective if we right-size the number of precincts.
See, I'm just a little confused because I had asked you if we're going to be closing precincts.
Okay.
And you said no, right?
Yeah, okay, so
But then you're also talking about the right sizing, which I know that in this Republican-led legislature, that's, that means people getting fired.
No Dispensa. Okay. In, in a lot of places, in a lot of election jurisdictions, one polling location holds one precinct. Okay, here on Guam, we know that one polling site can hold many precincts. So with that said, I was, I mistakenly was referring to precincts when I should be referring to polling sites. So we should have the same, we anticipate having the same number of polling sites. So voters will still go to possibly, probably the same polling sites, right? Not, not, not making the voter experience lesser. It will still be the same in that regard, going to the same polling location. It's just within the polling site, these precincts will be right-size. Precincts across the nation are divided geographically. Precincts on Guam, and I think it's the only place I know, where we divide precincts by last names.
Yeah, that's interesting, especially watching the results and you get the precinct come in and you know it's the last names, okay. Maybe that family, we need to work harder to get the support. You know, the, you talk about early voting in the 2024 election, significantly reduced election day turnout. And as you know, we here in the legislature, we're pulling our hair out too. How do we increase the voter turnout? But relative to the early voting, I really got a lot of feedback from constituents about the early voting that was done out in the villages. And I think pretty much every time you come in here, I was trying to advocate for this. You know, the Weston, great what you guys got going on there. But I think when we're talking about voter accessibility, how do you get any more accessible than bringing it to the village and making it convenient on an early voting standpoint? So does this bill at all, or does it allow you to do early voting in the villages?
Yes, it does, Senator. What we did was we tried early voting in the villages at least twice.
Right, Melesu and?
Well, no, we, we tried it in two elections. I don't know if it's, yeah. So once we went to Melesu, Okudu, GCC, no, north, central and south. And then we did that again a couple of times. The voter turnout at those villages were less than, when we compare it to the same, when we try to compare it with Weston, the voter turnout in those villages were much less than in, at Weston. So, you know, people outside, right? People say, how come you guys are so efficient? People don't realize that they don't have to travel so far to, there's 220 square, square miles, you know, between Weston and Umatac. It's really not that far. And people come to Costules and to Donkey so they can swing by there. Yes, you know, we're open to do it in the villages again. We, but our results show, our historical results show in, on paper that those, that we don't get voter, we don't get higher voter turnout in the village as we do if we consistently work at Weston. So we make sure that the early voting times, you know, we open at, we open up till 6:00. We open on Saturday to make it convenient for the voter.
Right, and I think, you know, when you talk about the Weston, I think part of why it's been successful for you guys is it's been constant and consistent. And I think if we just applied the same kind of effort to early voting in the villages, you would see probably the same result, you know, where people now they're, it's in their mind, Weston, Weston, Weston. Well, maybe if we, we go out there in the villages and we, we bang the drum and we give that opportunity for the voters in the villages to go out and vote, then maybe it'll become something that, you know, over the course of several elections improves. Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Maria, for answering the questions. And Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
You're very welcome. This is why Maria and I have a great Vice Chair for this committee on elections. He asks the tough questions and he's definitely very thorough. So, and I greatly appreciate that he's here today to ask those questions. It's a protection of the people. And at this time, if there are no more questions for the questions, I'd like to conclude this hearing on this bill, Bill 153-38-COR. And at this time, my office will continue to accept written testimonies on the hearing today for, within five business days or, or sooner, because we're trying to get this on the session agenda. So as soon as you can, if, if you can provide any kind of testimony, any of those who are listening. And you can send those testimonies via mail to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Suite, Suite 407 of the DNA Building, Hagatnya. You may also send written testimony to my office via email at senatortelotti@gmail.com. Thank you all for participation, your participation, and create a great day. The time now is 10:29 a.m. and this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, Sidoos Massey.